Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education. Meeting today is Thursday, July 27, 2023. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sae?
Here.
Mr. Grippel?
Present.
Dr. Hopkins. Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Maris?
Here.
Mr. Siobhan. Ms. Singh?
Here.
Dr. Smith. Ms. LaCour.
Here. And for the record, Paul. Oh, sorry. For the record, Sammy and Mike let us know that they wouldn't be here for today's meeting. Can you read the Open Publics Meeting Act from memory, please?
In accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential?
So moved.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Arteman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourning to confidential for the purpose of discussing. I'm sorry. We are adjourning to confidential for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including a special education settlement, a student personnel matter, and personnel matters. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, and we'll be back. Good evening and welcome back to the Franklin Township Board of Education regular meeting. Today is still Thursday, July 27. We just came back from confidential. The reason for the minutes for confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. But we adjourned to discuss a special education settlement, a student personnel matter, and personnel matters. Laurie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, where my nation under God and the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Dennis, would you read the mission statement?
Mission statement. Franklin Township Public Schools embrace its diversity, foster excellent educational interventions, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by Dennis. And that includes the adjustment to A3?
Yes.
A3 has been changed to affirm. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is now adopted. And since we have a new student representative, John?
Sure, thank you. I only have one item tonight. It's on transportation. And I just want to say, we are all still shaken by the tragic event that occurred late last week, and our thoughts and prayers continue to be with the family and friends of the young student who lost her life due to what law enforcement has described as negligence on the part of an employee of one of our transportation vendors. As a board, we do want to convey that transportation safety has been and continues to be a top priority for the district. Our Transportation Department imparts clear expectations on all of our bus vendors with regard to safety, and in recent days has taken additional steps to remind those vendors of our expectations to ensure their compliance. Compliance spot checks are also conducted by our transportation personnel. Those checks have continued over the past few weeks as our summer programs are winding down, and these checks, as well as other compliance oversight activities, will remain an important part of our procedures as all of our students return to school in September. In addition, the board has asked its attorneys to once again review bus contracts, including the contract with the vendor whose employee was charged in the case involving the loss of our student, to learn what options are available, when, and if it's necessary to act. In addition, as we move forward, especially given the increase in the number of different vendors needed to cover bus routes for the district, the board is working to further tighten bid specifications used when bidding out supplemental and additional bus routes that oftentimes results in hiring of new companies. Finally, as a board, we pledge, we will continue to seek ways to further ensure compliance of all policies, rules, and regulations as they pertain to safely transporting students, and will continue to work with our vendors to make sure safety remains a top priority. And that's it for us tonight.
Thank you. And mine is very short. Can you join us in a moment of silence for a beautiful little girl with an infectious smile who was quite the fashionista, Virginia Williams, who tragically died on July 17? Thank you. And now we are on to comments from the public, five minutes per speaker on agenda items only. Please come up to the podium, state your name, address.
Motion.
Can I get a motion to open that?
Oh, so moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by Laurie, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items only is now open. Welcome Mayor Kramer.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have to sign in. It says mayor.
We'll figure it out.
I figured you will. So first of all, my condolences to the tragedy that the family, the Board of Ed family, and the entire Franklin family has to endure. It's a tragedy, and I've called the superintendent and the president to express my condolences and offer whatever resources the town might have to help. But on a better note, I come bearing gifts. These are the, this is one of the air monitors that we're using. We're starting an air monitoring program in Franklin because of the wildfires from Canada, the way it's affected the air, and also because of the warehouses that are coming in. We want to get some air monitoring done this year before a lot of the warehouses start, and then air monitoring once the warehouses have started, so that if it's changed the air in Franklin, then we will have something to go to the state with and be able to discuss with them the issues of the air monitoring. Mr. Bornlocker and I, and separately Deputy Mayor Embarrasson, came up with the idea and decided that we need to distribute as many as we can around, and we thought if you put one at each school, then you could mount it there outside in the school. It needs a power plug and Wi-Fi, and we would have 10 locations from the public schools, and we're also giving it to the private schools. And so we'll have several locations around town to be able to monitor the air and get a good sampling. The town bought them. They're about $300 each for your donation requirements, so you can log it as that. And Mr. Bornlocker and I, the town manager and I, bought our own. We paid for it with our own money, and we're putting up, we already have ours going. Somerset runs this up and running, and then there's a private citizen who also has it running on their own. So we thought that it would be good at the schools, and the schools could use it as a teaching opportunity. They may be able to do some calculations themselves. As the private schools, I've told them, if they have ideas and curriculum, that perhaps we could use the public schools itself as kind of a depository for various curriculums so that those things can be shared. So I present to you 10 Purple Ear air sensors.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Maris, follow up. We'll get those from you. Mr. Banano's coming over to take those. We have our buildings and grounds folks, Mr. Bornlocker already spoke with me. We have our buildings and grounds folks already motivated to install these. They're working with our tech folks, and our science folks are on board as well. So on behalf of the board, I say thank you. And do any of the board members have any questions? Me?
Anybody?
Good.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome. And I'll send the email with the instructions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on agenda items only?
Say it, Madam President. Move to close the public session.
I so second it.
Motion closed. Public comment by Bill, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comments now closed. Now we are on to our committee and liaison reports. Dennis, would you like to lead us with strategic planning?
Yes. All right. All right. The committee met on July 25, 2023. I myself as chair was there. Will Grippel, Walter Jackson, Nancy LaCour, Dr. John Rivali, and Mary Clark was in presence. The meeting began at 7:45. Members of the committee have previously been provided with a summary document of the work completed under the prior strategic plan. There was no questions from the group on that summary. The committee members presented at this, present at this meeting reviewed and discussed a summary of the results of the surveys conducted by the strategic plan consultants from King University, including a summary of the open-ended responses submitted by staff members, student families, and members of the larger Franklin community. The committee then reviewed a list of broad goals, statements aligned to the comments and responses from the stakeholder holder survey. These draft goals, statements fall under the following categories: health and safety, curriculum and instructions, personnel, sustainable and green, it's, it's, and ten affairs, and community engagements. The committee was invited to add their own comments to this work listed over the next few weeks. Administrations would then further refine the broad goal statements in consideration of the committee comments and develop action steps for the committee to review at their next meeting on August 15, 2023. The meeting was adjourned at 8:20, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Dennis, can you also read policy?
All right. This meeting was conducted on July 24, 2023. I myself as chair was present. Ashida, Sani was there. Dr. Michael Smith was there. Dr. John Rivali was there. Nancy LaCour and Mary Clark was also there. The committee met and discussed policy 2419, School Threat Assessment Teams. This is a new policy created to comply with the recent law requiring school districts to create schools' threat assessment teams in the school year 2324. The purpose of the, of a threat assessment team is to provide school teachers, administrators, and other staff with assistance in identifying students of concern, assessing those students' risk for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and delivering innovation strategies to manage the risk of harm for students who pose a potential safety risk. Prevent target violence in the school and ensure a safe and secure school environment that enhances the learning experience for all members of our school community. The law provides that the NJ DOE should provide guidance on establishing these teams. Unfortunately, the guidance was not released at the time that this policy was created, so the policy is based solely on the law. We expect the guidance, we expect that the guidance will be reviewed, and any changes made to the policy and accompanying regulations by the board with the August meeting, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Walter, would you do curriculum and, I'm sorry, facilities?
Okay, I'll start with facilities. In attendance, myself, Walter Jackson, Ms. Artemon Singh, Ms. Laurie Maris, Ms. Nancy LaCour, Dr. John Rivali, Mr. Brian Banano, Mr. Ryan Ellis, and Mr. Mark McNamara. Updates. Board members, project updates. Mr. Banano provided an update on construction of the new Buildings and Grounds facility and the Warrior Health Center. Both projects expected to be complete in early fall. We will be scheduling tour dates for board members. Facility use. The committee discussed the facility use applications appearing on the board's July 27 agenda. Change order number one, B&amp;G Office and Garage. The committee reviewed change order number one, which will be charged to the contract allowance. Facility use waiver. The committee discussed the annual waiver request to use pre-K classrooms as permitted by the NJ DOE guidelines. Energy report. Mr. Ryan Ellis provided the committee with the Claremont Solar Report. And for the good of order, Dr. John Rivali upbied the committee on district activities with regard to ensuring compliance to safety measures on all bus routes. The meeting adjourned at 7:24. Okay, one second.
So you guys don't have it queued up. Laurie, can you?
Policy?
Cue up finance and?
Curriculum, okay, I got it.
Finance?
Yeah. I'm ready for curriculum, sorry. Curriculum committee met on July 19 via Zoom at 6 o'clock. In attendance were Dr. Michael Smith, chair, myself, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Ms. Nancy LaCour, district, Dr. Dan, Dr. Dan Loughran, Dr. John Rivali, Mr. Craig Lewis, and Ms. Isha Pacholi. New business. New business. The committee discussed the following proposals for board consideration. Motion to adopt the Benchmark Advanced K through 5 Literacy Program. The structured literacy program is designed to meet all the needs of all learners, including striving readers and English learners at all proficiency levels. Motion to submit an NJ DOE bilingual program waiver request for 2023-2024. It stipulated in school law, if the age range, grade span, and/or geographic location of the district's ELS makes impractical for the district to provide a full-time bilingual program, districts may annually submit a request to the New Jersey Department of Education to waive this requirement. Motion to approve a science textbook by biology for the AP course for use in grades 9 through 12 beginning in September 2023. This text aligns closely with Advanced Placement Biology course. Motion to approve acceptance of the 2023-2024 ESEA federal funds, as well as submission of the application grant to receive them. Accepting these funds will support district teaching and learning initiatives. Motion to approve a new course proposal for race, gender, and equity core. This course will support special education students in grades 11 and 12 beginning September 2023. Motion to approve a new course proposal for robot makers' next generation. This course will support special education students in grades 6 through 8 beginning September 2023. The committee discussed the following presentations. Benchmark Advanced Literacy Program presented by Dr. Daniel Loughran on behalf of district stakeholders. And the meeting adjourned, let's say, 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, can you do finance and Bill so you can gear up for safety?
Sure. The finance committee met Tuesday, July 25 at 6:02 PM. In attendance were myself, Laurie Maris, Walter Jackson, Artemon Singh, Nancy LaCour, Dr. John Rivali, and Brian Banano. Financials and contracts. The committee reviewed the supplemental, Bill's list for the month of June, and Bill's list for the month of July. Committee reviewed the board's secretary's report, transfer report, bank reconciliation for the prior month. Transportation aid in lieu. The committee was updated on the change to the aid in lieu for transportation for the 2023-2024 school year. The meeting was adjourned at 6:13 PM.
Thank you.
The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on July 24. The meeting began at 6:03 PM. In attendance were myself as chair, Walter Jackson, Laurie Maris, Nancy LaCour, Dr. Rivali, Brian Banano, Jackie Schneider, was actually absent, and William Murlock. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee reviewed and discussed the following items: Personnel Report dated today, July 27, number one. The Personnel Committee reviewed the Personnel Report. Appointments include new staff for the 2023-2024 school year, teacher mentorship reimbursements, curriculum writing, summer programs, PBS team hours, and web curators. Chapter 44 Update. The committee discussed the status of the Chapter 44 implementation. For the good of the order, the committee discussed the proposed increment withholding which is on the agenda tonight. The meeting ended at 7:07 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. And mine is for the strategic planning meeting, which we had on 7:18. In attendance were all of the board members, Dr. Rivali, Dr. Loughran, Brian Banano, Orva Wilson, Mary Clark, and our New Jersey School Board's Field Service Representative. And we discussed the, excuse me, we discussed the goals which we are voting on tonight, which are 812. So, and the meeting ended at, started at 6 o'clock and ended at approximately 8:30. And that, does anyone else have any liaison reports or anything? No? Bill, you have nothing? Liaison reports?
So I serve on two committees, the Somerset County Ed Services Committee and the Hunterdon County Ed Services Committee. Both committees met in June to finalize various elements of the services that they provide the districts. And one was a negotiation with Somerset County and the use of facilities and things like that. So that's basically the liaisons. But I've been doing both county agencies since I've been on the board, so it's interesting.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to the new business part. Ready?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A2 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions, A3 HIV Case Number 249073, Affirming the Decision, A4 Student Safety Data Report, A5 New Policy First Reading, A6 Facilities Use A through G, A7 Donation, A8 McKinney-Vento Collaboration, A9 Counseling Practicum Intern Affiliation Agreement with King University, A10 IDEA Grant Submission, A11 Special Education Settlement, A13 Air Quality Monitors, A14 Facilities Use A and B, A15 2023-2024 BEA Budget Revision, B1 Warranted Payroll, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approvals A through BB, B4 Change Orders, B5 Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Facilities Approval, B6, B7, B8 Preschool Private Providers, B9 Head Start Enhanced Program, B10 Head Start Enhanced Program Private Provider, B11 Award of RFP for U Development Mentorship Program at FHS and FMS, B12 ESEA Consolidated Grand Funds for Fiscal Year 2024, B13 ESEA Consolidated Grand Fund Fiscal Year 2024 Application, B14 Purchase of a District Vehicle for Food Services, B15 State Aid, B16 Non-Public Funding, B17 School Breakfast, Lunch, and Milk Prices for 2023-2024 School Year, B18 Fiscal Year 2024 Insurance Policies, B19 Deferred Compensation, B20 Third-Party Administrator, C1 Out-of-District Students 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 School Years, C2 Field Trip Destinations, C3 Field Trip Applications, there are no applications at this time, C4 FHS and FMS Athletic Schedules, C5 Athletic Ticket Pricing for 2023-2024, C6 NJSIA Fall Season Start Dates, C7 2023-2024 Bilingual Program Waivers, C8 Benchmark Advanced Literacy Programs, C9 Science Textbook Approval, C10 Approve New Courses, P1 Instructional Substitute Rates for 2023-2024, P2 Increment Withholding for 2023-2024 School Year, and P3 Personnel Report Number One dated today, July 27. Once again, I would like to make a motion for R1, M1, A1 to A11, A13 to A15, B1 to B20, C1 to C10, and P1 to P3.
Thank you. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second by Laurie. Any questions, comments? Laurie?
No questions, thank you.
Ashida? Bill?
Walter?
Dennis?
Good.
Walter?
No questions.
Arteman?
No questions.
Brian, can you roll call, please?
Mr. Sae?
Yes, to everything except for A2.
A2?
No. A2 is a no. I, no, I abstain, sorry.
Mr. Grippel? Yes. Dr. Hopkins?
Everything except for A3 abstaining from that. I came in late for it.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. LaCour?
Yes.
All motions carried.
Okay, great. And now we are on to our district goals. Can I get, which is 812? Can I get someone to move that, please? Moved by Arteman, seconded by?
Second.
Dennis? All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, Walter, I'm sorry. Okay. Dennis, can you read the first one, please? Dennis, can you read the first one, please?
The approved, the approved goals for 2024, 2324. Number one, continue to ensure the health and safety of students, staff, and community, and seek out those who will benefit through policy procedures and promotion of wellness programs, thereby addressing food insecurity and physical, mental, and emotional wellness.
Thank you. Walter, would you read number two, please?
District Goals 2023-2024 School Year, number two. Continue to progress toward the elimination of systemic racism and linked men white supremacy, and remove access barriers to all students, have equal access to rigorous academic programming, ensure that inclusion and belonging of all FTPS community members are embedded in the structure of the district, and any attempt or practice to discriminate will not be tolerated.
Thank you. Bill, do you read three, please?
So district goal number three, continue to build capacity in the current staff through high-quality professional development, and opportunity for growth toward leadership opportunities while recruiting and sustaining a diverse, high-quality workforce.
Thank you. Nishida?
District Goals 2324, number four. Support policy and programs that address learning gaps, learning recovery, and learning acceleration to assist students in reaching their full learning potential. Identify, engage, and support students who show the need for expanded, expanded levels of rigor. Continue the expansion of innovative college preparation programming, and place emphasis on development of career readiness programs.
Thank you. Lori, can you do five?
District Goals for 2023-2024, goal number five. Reduce food and energy waste. Foster environmental awareness. Continue increasing clean energy projects. Increase recycling efforts and encourage the FTPS community to engage in environmentally sound projects. Support each school's pursuit of achieving sustainable jersey certification.
Thank you. Artiman?
District Goals 2023-2024, number six. Work to further relationships and incorporate a multitude of strategies to listen to, connect to, and partner with stakeholders to address community needs. Celebrate and proactively promote the school district within the community at large, and ensure family engagement of students attending FTPS.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Lori, Nishida, Bill?
No.
Dennis, Walter, Artiman?
I thought it was just to make a comment, the workshop we had was very fruitful when we put these goals together. It looked at board members, listened to one another, which was, which is always nice, right? And I think it moves the district further along in its overall goal for student achievement, safety, and all the progress we've made in the last year.
Thank you. Brian, can you roll call, please?
Mr. Sai?
Yes.
Mr. Griffo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. La Court?
Yes.
Okay. And now we are on to comments from the public on any topic. Can I get a motion to open public comment?
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now open. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Unless you're, if you're under eighteen, just your name.
First, on behalf of so many in our community, I want to express my deepest condolences to the parents, family, and loved ones. Fajer, Atiya Williams. Our community is heartbroken for this family. Your daughter will be missed, and we will always remember her. And we express our appreciation for the family members, her mother, her father, who are here today. I'm here this evening to ask for an opportunity for the parents of students who receive special education services in Franklin to meet with Dr. Rivali and the Special Education Administration to discuss concerns that have been previously discussed with teachers, principals, and special education supervisors. In conversations with other special education parents, we are grateful that there has been an increased effort by the administration to improve the district's Special Education Parent Advisory Council, known as CPAC, in order to support special education students. For those who might not know, CPAC, and a number of our parents are here tonight, I'd ask them to stand now to show our support and solidarity. CPAC is a state-mandated district-level parent-driven group charged with providing input to the local school district on system-level challenges in special education and related services. A CPAC gives parents the opportunity to provide direct input to their school districts about policies, programs, practices, and services that have an impact on students with disabilities and their families. Thank you for standing. So while we appreciate the work last year that went into organizing and planning CPAC meetings that focused on topics suggested by parents, please know that there is so much more work to do. There is a saying, nothing about us without us. For us, this means that it is important that children with disabilities and their parents are at the table to inform, to influence, and to contribute to ensure what is input, what is put in place enables our children to receive the education they deserve. We would like to continue working through topics that have been previously discussed with Franklin School Administration that we feel have not yet been resolved. Some of these topics include better communication to parents regarding programs and processes and reporting of services, supports, and accommodations, safety concerns, that includes busing, as well as school-based pickup and drop-off processes during the regular and extended school year, and how we can keep parents better informed through bus tracking services and other technologies, more opportunities for inclusion in the general education environment for academics and extracurriculars, inconsistencies with receiving progress reports for children's individualized education program, also known as IEPs, the lack of data-driven IEP goals and monitoring of those goals, training for special education teachers, support staff, as well as special staff, and all general education teachers, because special education is not just for one type of teacher, it should be for all teachers, constant change of service locations. For example, elementary kids are having to change schools too often because their service location is continually changing, the need for orientation for school tours so that special needs students and their parents, particularly those who are transitioning, such as kindergartners, rising sixth graders, ninth graders, new students in high school, seniors who are preparing for adult life, understand what's happening, the inconsistency of case managers, and even some parents not being told who their case manager is until late October, the need for consistent distribution of informational letters, this could be in the form of welcome letters, this could be in the form of emails, but especially to new parents and special education students that clearly indicate who their leaders are in the district, at the school, as well as how to best contact those leaders. These leaders should also contain information on CPAC and how they can be involved and participate, as well as process details for the school, such as maps and directions. I don't think I said my name. My name is Lauren Samerson. And I'm here...
Did you repeat your name, please? I didn't hear it.
Yes, ma'am. Lauren Samerson. I'm here tonight, along with other parents, to speak out on behalf of special education students. The measures that support children with disabilities help all children grow and help our communities be stronger and accessible to people of all abilities. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We look forward to more opportunities to collaborate with the administration to ensure our students are receiving the appropriate programs and support in order for them to achieve their goals and their future success.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any topic?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Karen Troutman. I live at 74 Gates Road in Somerset. It's been a while since I've been to the microphone, and in that time, my husband bought me this shirt that says "Best Karen Ever." And he told me not to come to the microphone wearing the Best Karen Ever shirt because it's the joke that I'm always going to ask for the manager or the superintendent or whoever is in charge, right? But I've known many of you for years. Our friendship goes pretty deep. The board president is the only non-blood-related individual that my children call aunt and her husband uncle. It's nice to see Lori. We see each other almost every weekend now in the, at the pool. Artiman and I, we go back a long, long time. Mr. Griffo, you are my son's principal, and so on. So for those of you who don't know, I am a former teacher here in the district. I am on the PTO at McAfee. I am employed through EduStaff. I'm a substitute teacher currently. I'm also a foster mom. And being a foster mom means that your house is safe, that people know that their kids will be safe when they come to my house. It also means that any children that are in my care through DCPNP know that they will always be safe. I'm entrusted with that. Our children do have to leave our home, though, right? They're the pieces of our heart that walk and live amongst us all. And nothing is more precious to a parent than that. And blindly, we walk in faith, saying that, God, please protect our children. And I look back at your goals for this upcoming school year with health and safety being the first one, and I appreciate that. I don't want to say too much. I don't want to overstep. I do want to say that as I am here with CPAC, I do represent a lot of different people, but for tonight, I represent myself. And tonight, the Troutman family stands with the family of the student whom we lost, and we extend our sincerest condolences.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any topic?
Hello, everyone. My name is Najman Ash. I am the mother of Fajer Williams, who passed away on Tuesday, July 18th, and I just have a couple of questions for you all. The first one will be, since my Fajer passed away, has the district conducted any investigation into Montauk Transit Services? Do I state both the questions before you answer?
Just keep speaking, and then we'll address everybody's answers at the end of...
Got it. Okay, this is my first one. Okay. And my second question is, what will be your course of action to ensure that this doesn't happen to any other family in Franklin Township? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any questions on any topic?
Seeing no one, I make a motion to close public comment.
Motion... Okay, I'm sorry.
Before I say anything, my deepest condolences to the family who had an accident in the nose of life, and sincere condolences to your family. Respected board members, I'm Sushant Sonkar residing at Fort Ordinard Lane in Somerset. I've been a resident of Franklin Township for over seventeen years. I'm ashamed that currently, students who attend charter schools are not allowed to participate in the township house of high school athletic programs, such as soccer, basketball, and other programs. Will the board consider revising this policy for eligible students since some of the charter schools do not have the option for these programs for reasons such as not enough players? That's a question.
I missed the last thing that you said. Can you repeat that?
Will the board consider revising this policy for eligible students since some of the charter schools do not have these options for reasons such as lack of enough candidates for these programs in the schools? That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any topic?
Madam President, since there's no one else, I'll make a motion to close public comments.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now closed. John?
Sure. First, Ms. Nash, Mr. Williams, condolences to your family. I was the one who reached out last week, did leave a message, said anything we can do, you know, please contact me. I know, I believe you have a GoFundMe set up, and you have some other things that you're working on. We can certainly work with you on that. And I know Mr. Rivera has reached out as well. Your daughter's principal, and the staff would like to be involved as well. So, you know, when you're ready, please connect with us, and we'll go forward from there. Well, with regard to the investigation, yes, we've been working with the local police, Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, working to investigate all and any potential leads to those who may have been involved. So we have been cooperating with them, we've been meeting with them, and certainly the company, the employee, and working with them in the investigation into that. As far as compliance, you know, we do several things to ensure compliance, and we're going to continue to do those things. And I think, to move on to the second person, Laura, I think some of what we could do with you all will help, too. I'm going to encourage, Dr. Sofield is in the back of our room. Laura, where did you, oh, here you are, sorry. Lauren, correct?
Lauren.
Yeah, Lauren. Lauren, if you could do me a favor, if you could serve as that lead person to help organize the parents, I would love to be involved, and we can do that sooner rather than later. This is a good time for that, and I know we can learn a lot from you all, and I would love to do that. Dr. Sofield, if she's in the back, I don't know if you know Dr. Sofield, but she is the young lady in the back who's raising her hand. If you could provide your contact information to her, we're going to try and set that up sooner rather than later, and get around a table in person if we could. I think that would probably be most productive. You know, we're probably beyond the days where we have to worry about that, or at least for now. So I'd like to get around a table in person, have that more personal conversation about your experiences, and what we might be able to do to improve the experiences for your kids, because that's what is important here. And, you know, if you don't feel as if we've made enough progress, I'm glad to hear we've made some progress, but, you know, it's never enough, and we've got to make more. So we certainly want to learn more of what we can do. So I'd like to set that up before you leave, if we could. So please provide that. So please, provide that contact information to her, and we'll get that going. And again, condolences to the family, and I think that's it for us.
Please, I'm so very, very sorry, and I know that we all are, for your loss. Ms. Maris and I attended your daughter's funeral. And it was beautiful to hear the stories from the teachers and the photos and the videos of your daughter, which were just... She was a beautiful little girl. So I'm so incredibly sorry, and I know that we all are. John, could you just address the charter school issue, please?
Sure. I mean, that's a board policy. And, you know, there was a point in time where we did offer to the charter schools the opportunity to allow kids to participate because there's obviously expense associated with running activities. And we did at one point offer an opportunity for them to participate for a fee, an athletic fee, if you will. There was never a lot of movement on that, and that goes back several years. But we certainly would welcome that if there's, you know... What we can't do is you can't offer duplicate programs. That's not allowed by the state. So if a particular charter school, and that's where it gets dicey, because if one charter school has a soccer team, but another one doesn't, then not all charter kids can participate on ours. Only those in the charter schools that don't have soccer teams are allowed if they are already participating in an NJSIA program. So it does get a bit challenging, which is why a lot of districts follow a similar policy, because you can be penalized if, in fact, you're found to have students that are participating in both, or they're choosing to participate with you even though their school has one. So, you know, it does get challenging as charter schools get larger and they start to have more programming. But again, you know, certainly something that we had offered out to the charter schools got probably five years ago or so, pre-pandemic. And if that's something of interest, certainly you can have the charter school CEO reach out, and we can rekindle those discussions.
Thank you. Also on the personnel report tonight was the appointment of some very notable people. Carla Wallace, who is going to be our dance teacher, or actually who now is our dance teacher at Franklin High School, is a Franklin High School graduate. And her grandfather was Dennis Harris, who was the very longtime attendance officer for the district. So if Carla's here, or if you'd like to come up.
It's me. It's Kayla.
Oh, I'm sorry. And you know what? He wrote Kayla, and I'm just like reading it, Carla. Feel welcome, Kayla.
Hi, I'm Kayla Wallace. Yes, I will be one of the, I will be the new dance teacher at Franklin High School. I'm a Franklin High School graduate. I graduated 2014. My grandfather served this district for a very long time as the attendance officer. My father served the district, too, as a security guard in the early 2000s. And my grandmother also served the district as a paraprofessional, Shirley Harris, for a very long time as well. So I'm very proud to be taking this position and continuing to give back to the community that raised me. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, and it's always great to hire our own. And now, EAS has, well, actually, Pine Grove has a loss of a bilingual teacher. And EAS has a gain of a new vice principal, Edgar Vasquez Molina. Congratulations on your new position, and please...
Good evening, board members. My deepest condolences to the family. And I'm very excited to take on this new journey as I transition from teacher to administrator. And I just want to, you know, say that I'm very grateful to continue to serve Franklin Township and its beautiful, diverse community. And I want to communicate also to the families, the community, that they can reach out to me with any concerns, any questions. I'll have an open-door policy. And I think my first goal at Elizabeth Avenue is to create those relationships, become familiar with our students, with our staff, with our parents. And, you know, I like to be part of the community events, interact with the parents, bring them on board to the school, you know, collaborate. And I know that we will create a great, great team. So, thank you.
Thank you. And what a great transition from Teacher of the Year at Pine Grove to now Vice Principal at EAS. So congratulations. Now we're on to Good in the Order. Dennis, do you have anything?
Well, we still have approximately a month and maybe a couple of days left before the kickoff for the 23-24 year. And the administration and the teachers are gearing up to make sure that we start off on a good note and on a good note. So we are still plowing forward. And also, my condolences to you with the loss. And so, yeah, that hit the soul and the spirit of the township hard. So my condolences.
Thank you. Walter?
Congratulations, Kayla. I know the high school will be excited about you coming in and doing what you do. Congratulations, Edgar. This was a tough month. Our deepest, my deepest condolences to you, Mrs. Nash, Mr. Williams. You had a warrior princess that this district will indeed miss. We are hearing and listening to everything that all of you are saying, and we will continue to support you and your family in any which way that you need us to do. So please, as Dr. Ravalley said, don't hesitate to reach out to him and the rest of his staff or any one of us. You are continuing, you will continuously be in our prayers and our thoughts. So blessings to you and your family as you go through this.
Thank you. Bill?
Get the microphone to work. Okay. Over the years, in Franklin, I've heard two compliments. One is how great our arts department is. So Ms. Harris, I know your grandfather, and do your grandfather very well. And I did some fundraiser together for Pop Warner. And you're going to continue the great tradition of our arts program here in Franklin Township. It is the best in the state. The other thing that I've always heard about is our special ed department, that people come to Franklin just for the special ed department, for our fine programs. And I know that in light of this horrible tragedy that happened, we have to have the courage to continue that department that we're so proud of and enhance it, as Dr. Ravalley said, with in-person meetings, meeting with Dr. Sofel, and continuing the great tradition would be a great testimony to the sorrow that set upon us this week. So, you know, any help I could be for you, please reach out.
Ashida? I wanted to say congratulations to Edgar and Ms. Harris. My deepest condolences to you and your family as you go through this. And I'm going to piggyback on what everybody else has said. Please reach out to us for any needs or comfort.
Lauren?
My congratulations to our new appointees. And Mrs. Nash, my deepest condolences. I truly am praying for you and for your family. And I hope that you will stay connected with us and let us know how we can be of support to you. Thank you.
I also want to begin by giving my sincerest condolences to the family, the mom, dad, and everyone in the family. Congratulations to our new appointees. Very excited, you know, to have our very own move up to the levels and move in from teaching to administration, and our former warrior coming in as a teacher. So it's a win-win for us. I also want to say, I was not able to be at, you know, the services of the little girl because I was away at a conference. And there was a speaker who spoke there, and it almost felt that the speaker was talking to me. And she said, and this applies to Franklin, she said, "Children belong to everyone and somebody who believes in them. We as a community, we as a district, are healers. Children will make mistakes. They will stumble and fall. But when they are in need, someone of us will give them the benefit of doubt. We can't do this on our own. We succeed when we stick together. We choose to turn away from the fear, anger, and polarization, or we choose to create a world of generosity and love. We have to rebuild our country, child by child. We are in this together and won't give up."
Thank you. And I just want to hug you and tell you how sorry that I am. Words can't express how we feel, and it affects certain of us differently because we have different relationships. But we're here. We're here for every child in this district. They, that's why we do what we do, is because of every single child in this district. And they mean so much to us, and every child's success. And sorrows to hold each other and to hug each other. So I have no words. And with that, thoughts and prayers, and please continue to pray for your daughter and your family and the school community. I know a lot of teachers were very affected, and students in September will be as well. And with that, in your daughter's memory, we are adjourned.